Oh, hey, family. Sorry, y'all, I had shadow work sessions. I was trying to pull the thing over and I was trying to... Hey, family, if it's just coming live and you can't see it, anyways, let me get these pillows right. Okay. Out the way. Um, and let me get myself together, right? I was rushing upstairs to get myself together, family. Because I was actually sitting outside on my patio. But, so today we have a specific topic that I'm gonna talk about, which is called self-discipline, okay? You should know about that, right? But if not, that's what we're gonna discuss. So I'm gonna let a couple of people get in here. Um, but if not, we're gonna, I'm gonna keep on with it. You can watch it afterwards. But it's definitely a topic that has to be discussed and talked about. Um, and you know, basically what you guys should be doing, right? Especially spiritually, right? Um, which is self-discipline or having self-discipline, okay? Um, put a little bit of oil on my hands. Okay. Hey, sis. Hello there. How you doing? Ready to talk about some self-discipline? Um, yeah, so I got me some things I have here that I'm gonna talk about. Um, shadow work sessions, you know, maybe, I'm not sure how long it's gonna be, but we're gonna talk about self-discipline. And then I'm gonna pull a shadow work card for us. I'm good, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Um, I had a really good day today, right? So, yeah, so it was good. I was just happy to get off of work today because it seemed like the more work was coming in, I was like, okay. So I was trying to get up off of there, but I did set some things up for my move, so I'm excited about that, right? Like my, um, switched over my lights, you know, at a specific time and all that type of stuff. So we'll get stuff done slowly but surely, you know? Yeah. I was like, wait a minute, they keep sending stuff. I was like, okay, I'm ready to get off. And so at five, I got off, okay? Yes, but, um, yes, sister. So, yeah, so today, I'm gonna go ahead and get into it. I mean, I'm gonna talk about self-discipline and the things that I've, um, inquired about, like research as well as what I do in reference of, um, being spiritually self-disciplined, right? And so for those that don't catch this video and watch it the replay, you know, take heed to the things that are discussed and try to pay attention to how self, how disciplined you are, you know, spiritually, okay? So, um, maybe you're, maybe you're disciplined or you have self-discipline about other things. But when it comes to your spiritual walk or journey, um, you may not have that. You know what I'm saying? Even if you're not, um, on a spiritual journey and let's say you're just in life, you know, what do you have mastered in reference of self-discipline, right? So I want to talk about the true, um, spiritual self-discipline, right? So that always for me, um, you know, it started with routine, right? Um, because that's what discipline is, like being able to pretty much set a standard for yourself, a goal for yourself in reference of what you want to have done, you know what I'm saying? And sticking to it, right? Being disciplined. Now, by what it states in reference of what self-discipline spiritually it says, um, it says, "True spirituality is hardest of all disciplines" because it involves disciplining your thoughts, your emotions, your intentions, and your actions all the time, which is true. It's like you, that it is the hardest thing, right? Discipline, self-discipline is not easy, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying it's easy. I'm not saying it's a walk in the park. But I'm saying it's something that you have to dedicate yourself to, right? Um, disciplining your thoughts first. So you see how everything that you read up on, everything that you are told always starts with your thoughts because your thoughts is the main thing that's gonna allow you to do the, what you need to do, right? Because that comes from what your mental, your mind. Yeah, it's hard, right? Especially when it's something you don't really wanna do, right? You know what I'm saying? And most of the stuff that you have to be disciplined about, you don't wanna do, you know what I'm saying? So that's the whole thing. So it says, "While the discipline needed to achieve other goals in life is often a part-time pursuit and the discipline to grow and awaken spiritually is a full-time pursuit." So you see how that goes. It's like the stuff that you don't have to be disciplined about is like things that can happen within a little bit of time, you know what I'm saying? Like you can do stuff fast when you don't have to be disciplined about it, you know what I'm saying? It happens quick. It's like convenience, you know what I'm saying? Me too. I'm trying, listen. When I'm, when I get into my new space, I am trying to dedicate myself to start to work out because I, I see myself gaining and I'm just, I'm like, no, key, you gotta get it together. So I'm going to start working out. I have to. I'm gonna try to be disciplined. That is one of the things that I'm gonna try to have self-discipline with. Like I got my meditation and stuff routine down. I got a lot of different things. My, you know, prayer and stuff, we're gonna talk about that. But that's one of my examples I was gonna talk about. So we're gonna get into that, sis. We're gonna get into the exercises, sweets. Trust me, I feel you on that, okay? So, yeah, so basically, but what, but things that, like how we just talked about the exercise and, um, the sweets. Excuse me. Those are things that are like physically need our discipline. But what spiritually needs our discipline as well in reference of growing, right? On our, on our path. And so that comes into play with, um, what are, okay, what is, uh, self-discipline, I mean, spiritual disciplines? So I wanna read to you guys some of the spiritual disciplines that I, um, found as well as, you know, resonates with me. Okay, so it says, "Allows us to place ourself, um, before God so that he can transform us." So basically, self, spiritual discipline allows us to put our needs. Hey, hey, family. Um, allows us to put ourself in, in front of God and say, "I'm putting you first and the ancestors this first." You know what I'm saying? I'm putting my spirit team first before anything, you know what I'm saying? And so those are the things, you know what I'm saying? That, that is the first spiritual discipline out of it all, right? You know what I'm saying? It's like, you have to decide that. That's, that's another free will. That's your choice, right? Do I wanna be dedicated to, you know, put myself towards what I know God wants me to do? To do the greater good and stick to it? See, because when you make that, when you make that, um, when you make that, that thing of saying, "Hey, it has to happen. I have to do it this way because God is paying attention to me because I went before God because I talked to my ancestors." You know, I can't keep doing this. It's kinda like repenting and not going back, you know what I'm saying? So you have to be very careful on your spiritual disciplines, family, okay? Hey, Eldra. Um, second, an encounter with God, right? So spirit and God's work also, like so with spiritual discipline. Most people have spiritual discipline, um, once they have had that encounter with something that has really been like God-sent situation, you know what I'm saying? Like, oh my God, you know, maybe, Lord willing, maybe you had to go to the hospital for something that you, you know, you got okay and you feel like God brought you through that, which probably so, right? Then at that point, you feel like you have to be dedicate your life to God, you know what I'm saying? That's like a, a spiritual discipline for you. Maybe you pray every day then, you know what I'm saying? Because of something tragic, right? Um, but these are just things that I'm, that I'm, um, saying that some people decide to change their life around and do be spiritually disciplined, you know what I'm saying? Because they see the work of God, you know what I'm saying? Um, in most cases, that's the way it works. Like some people have to kinda like, and I know that's hard, you know, in reference of some people swallowing, but that's just how some people are. Versus some people don't have to see the work of God. They already have faith and know that God is working in their life regardless, so they already have that spiritual discipline, you see? So those, that's the duality of it, of the, of some people being spiritually disciplined just out, you know, out the gate or, you know, something actually having to happen, right? So being spiritually disciplined also is about internal change showing up from, um, showing up on the outside. So it's internally, you decided, "I'm gonna do this for myself." Because remember, I always tell you guys, you know, when you get spiritually disciplined, it's, it's a you thing. It's, it's, it's you making that choice. It's you deciding that you're gonna put your foot down and this is what it's gotta be because I gotta change my life, you know what I'm saying? And that's you changing on the inside, but it's showing from the outside. And not all the time will people be able to accept that either, you know what I'm saying? Because when that, and I'm gonna talk about that too, whenever you do become spiritually disciplined, it'll change you, you see what I'm saying? And then that's gonna reflect to the people around you or the energy around you, the energy and the, uh, environment that surrounds you, right? And who you, excuse me, and who you, sorry, just, hey, y'all. And who you allow in your energy or in your space or who you allow yourself to be around? You know what I'm saying? Because trust me, spiritual discipline has made a lot of things leave out of my life without me even trying, right? Because, excuse me, because one thing you gotta remember is when you start doing that prayer, and I always tell you guys this, I probably said it on a few different shadow work videos, but when you start praying and asking God to remove things from you that no longer serve you and to, you know, um, take things away from, you know, you gotta be careful of your wording, see? That's how, that's what I'm trying to tell you guys. What you speak becomes reality. And sometimes that reality, we don't even realize that that's what we're saying and then it be friends and, you know, that job dropping off and, you know what I'm saying? Because God said, "You asked for, you know, take stuff away that doesn't serve you, so I'm just gonna take it away." You ain't say, you know, take, don't take, you gotta be careful. Say, you know, "But leave what, what is, what I need," you know what I'm saying? With ease and no harm, you know, add some flair to that, right? Be careful what you speak because there's power in the tongue. It's like they always say that and that is the truth and I'm, and I know that now. I could speak to that, you know? So you have to be careful the way you start, you know, especially if you're starting to be spiritually disciplined or if you're already spiritually disciplined, you gotta be even more careful because your words are even powerful, you know, than before. Because you may be ascended and then if you're ascended, you know what I mean? And you're getting more powerful in who you are, then your words, you have to be very careful, you see? So I wanted to tell you guys that. Now, the other way of what is spiritual discipline or being spiritual disciplined is a way of sowing to spirit. So when they say sow into spirit, basically they're just saying you connecting with spirit, right? You connecting with spirit, okay, is gonna bring you spiritual discipline. Because just like we talk about with our ancestors and things of that sort, but when you start sowing into your ancestors, when you start honoring your ancestors, when you know that you have to do the greater good to show that, um, you have to do the greater good to show that ancestors, "Listen, I'm doing the right thing. I'm on the right path. I'm trying not to do anything outside of what I know you want me to do." You know what I'm saying? I honor you ancestors, God. I give you all praise and honor. And so I know I have to do the right thing and not the wrong. I'm asking for you to guide me even if you don't know how to move that way. But being spiritually disciplined is being mindful of even asking about that from your spirit team and being mindful of your thoughts and your behavior. At that point, when you start sowing into spirit and also sowing into spirit is sowing into you because you are your own spirit, right? So remember, this is all in reference of spiritual discipline about you internally, right? Changing things and it coming out, right? Like they say, "So within, so without," right? As above, so below. But you have to move with that energy too, right? To be able to reap that, right? So it goes back to what I was telling you guys before too about just being mindful of your, of your mind, of your perception, right? Because what, how you perceive what you're sowing into spirit may not be what this other person is, um, perceiving either, but that's okay because it's about your connection, see? So that's why it's good for you to have your own perception, but you know right from wrong, right? You know good from bad. You know how to follow all the rules, right? And so that's what you should be thinking about when it comes to your spiritual discipline. How disciplined am I? Am I listening to my ancestors when they tell me something which is what that voice, that inner voice? But it's also that gut feeling, right? And that's that, if you do divination, you know what I'm saying? Are you listening to what, what's coming out, you know what I'm saying? What, what's, what's those messages? Are you listening? Are, am I really spiritually disciplined to listen to what spirit is saying to me? This is really your spirit speaking to you through divination, right? And so that is if your connection is strong with your ancestors because it's gonna be as strong as you make it. It's gonna be as strong, your connection is gonna be as strong as you make it, right? If you like me, that always, every day I go to my ancestor altar. I make it a habit. I make it a ritual. I make it something I do daily, you know what I'm saying? I go in there, even if I'm not taking them coffee because some morning they already got they stuff. I may still go in there, turn, open the curtains, you know, open the blinds. "Hey, ancestors, today's gonna be a good day. Touch my altar and go on in my other office." You know what I'm saying? But every day have, uh, speak, connection. That's being spiritually disciplined, you understand? So if you could be that disciplined with, it's just like having a child. You know what I'm saying? You're not gonna go without watering your plants, you know, when they need to. You're not gonna go without feeding your child. You're not gonna go without feeding yourself. That's discipline. You see? You have to make it just like drinking water. You know, that's being spiritually disciplined because guess what? You have to water your spiritual connection just as much as you water you. You have to. Otherwise, you're gonna, you know, it's gonna be like how Miss T was saying. Days where you go and wanna ask for something and your ancestors and they may go be like, they're gonna be looking like, "Girl, you only come here when you want something." And that's, that connection gonna stop and you're gonna be wondering why? Because you wasn't spiritually disciplined because you didn't show them love, you know what I'm saying? Only when you needed something and you're not changing and they can see that. Because they know you're not spiritually disciplined. You're not doing the greater good. You're doing, you're doing dark magic and stuff on people. Not for the greater good. You know what I'm saying? Because you're not spiritually disciplined. When you doing that type of work, unless somebody killed a family member of yours, like your child or something like that, okay? And I get, you know, it's, I, 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 it's all good, you know what I'm saying? But if you doing something maliciously to cause somebody some harm and they haven't like harmed you in any way, you're gonna get that back. That's gonna cause your spiritual discipline to, um, that's gonna cause you to, to be out of alignment and it's gonna cause you karma. That's karma, right? So, yeah, I just wanted to say that too. But, okay, so back to the last reason on what it is to be spiritually disciplined. It's purpose is, uh, spiritual growth, okay? The purpose is to spiritually grow to be spiritually disciplined, family, right? Okay, let me see what y'all saying in there, okay? Let's see, love it. Okay, okay, hey. What'd I miss? Okay, that's a good way to look at it. Yes, right? I hardly ever ask for anything for myself. It's mainly for someone else and just to show, yes, that's right. That's what you should be doing, right? And I'm not to say, I'm not saying, you know, don't go to your ancestors when you need them. I'm not saying that. But make it a routine that, you know, when you go to them, it's like, "We're gonna do it because she always here." You know what I'm saying? Like, make it, make it a routine to just go in and just touch the altar. Make it a routine to say, "Good morning, ancestors." Make it a routine, "Good night, ancestors," right? Make it a routine, just like as if it's they there, right? So the thing of it is, is, you know, show thanks, show gratitude. Um, and, and you know what? If you struggle with spiritual discipline, excuse me, y'all. Ask the ancestors to help you with that. That's, that's the purpose. That's what the last thing was on the list is the purpose of this is to spiritually grow, to be spiritually disciplined, right? All of what you do in reference of your spiritual connection is about growth, you see? So I wanted to tell you guys that. And then on the what is not spiritual, being spiritually disciplined, the path does not produce the change. You don't change nothing. That's not spiritual discipline, you know what I'm saying? You don't have any discipline. You can't, you know, um, you can't show up for yourself. So how can someone else feel like you're gonna show up for them, right? And if you can't show up for yourself, which showing up for yourself is what your spirit team, right? Your internal you, you know what I'm saying? Who you truly are, if you can't show up for you, then, then you got a problem, family. You know what I'm saying? That means you can't change life. You can't change things in life if you can't show up for you because you are the first, right? Before anything else. So think about it like that, you know, in reference of self-discipline, right? And, um, most likely, if you're not spiritually disciplined or self-disciplined in the real world where you can't follow the rules, you can't follow commands, you can't follow laws, you can't follow certain situations, right? And I'm not saying be a follower, but be a leader within your life. Lead you, try that first, right? Try to lead you first. That makes you a leader out the gate, see? See how that work? Just sometimes people be like, "Oh, everybody can be a leader. Some people gonna be followers." Okay, well, that's in your opinion. To me, I feel like everybody's a leader because you lead your own life. It's free will for everyone in America and anywhere else, right? So it's free will. That means you have the option to lead who? You, right? Unless you let somebody else lead you. Okay? You can't let nobody else lead you. You, you can let somebody else lead you, but that's your choice. But if you lead yourself, that's a choice too. So do you choose you or you choose someone else over you? That's the question, see what I'm saying? So being mindful of that will also put you into some form of self-discipline or still, or spiritually disciplined, just like it when you, just like with most of anything, family. Even, and that's why I always say, being self-disciplined doesn't mean being stupid either. It doesn't mean being a follower either. It means check behind things. It means do your own research. It means get the knowledge, the wisdom and the understanding. Use it in reference of your freedom and take your power for change, the number five, right? And the supreme mathematics. I just gave you guys the whole. I say this all the time. Y'all should know the supreme mathematics just by that statement along that I say all the time, okay? But those, that's just listing out the numbers. One, the knowledge, right? This is self-discipline because remember, well, I always used to be around a whole bunch of upper centers. They used to definitely kick this all the time. And it's true because they always used to say self-discipline is the main recipe to anything, which is true now. I know it now, you know? But back when I was dating guys like that, I didn't really care what, I didn't really care because I wasn't on a spiritual journey. You know what I'm saying? To keep it real with you guys, you know, I'm gonna be 100 with you. But it really is true. You understand? So, yes, you know, knowledge first, right? We're gonna get that knowledge. I'm just not lying, you know what I'm saying? Because it's really true. Self-discipline is gonna take you through, family. That's gonna take you to the sky, I'm telling you. Because if you could be self-disciplined, you can meditate on time. You can meditate more than when you want to basically do it because being self-disciplined means you're gonna really sit and take that time, even journal, right? Self-discipline will take you to the next level spiritually because if you start doing your meditations and your prayers and all that stuff by being self-disciplined, right? That's gonna take you to the next level. If you start getting knowledge, right, in your wisdom and you stay dedicated to learning new things spiritually, right? Regardless if it's something big or small, it don't have to be nothing big and, you know, kicking the signs every day, but you might, you might learn, you know, something different about a herb. That's something spiritual, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's the way I look at it. That's something, you know, outside of the norm, you know what I mean? Like you might learn something about, I can't, I don't know, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm just making an example. But the whole, the whole thing of it is, is about you being disciplined enough to be able to gain that type of wisdom, to gain that type of understanding. Because it's about you freeing you. And when you free yourself, it's this that you talk, that I'm talking about freeing, family, from the mental bondage of the, of the world, of, of the, the illusion, the matrix, you see? So when y'all hear me say be mindful and come out of bondage, that's what I mean in, or freedom. When I'm talking to supreme mathematics, that's, that's this. That's the freedom, right? And your power comes within, right? Would you say, sis? Yes, I have definitely continued to ask ancestors, family, with that, right? Self-discipline, right? Yeah, because that's what I'm saying. It's okay. First of all, it's not gonna come overnight, right? Now, we're just gonna keep it real. It's not gonna come overnight, family, and that's okay too. But the ancestors definitely will help because all we gotta do is ask, right? Yeah, and it's gonna get easier and easier and easier, you know what I'm saying? And then make sure you doing your due diligence too. Make sure you putting your foot forward and that you decided to, you know, take one step, you know, and do it this way and make sure you stay at it, you know what I'm saying? Because that goes back to the repentance and then doing it again and then doing it again. And then the ancestors gonna be like, "Nah, I can't, you don't keep your words. I can't trust you, so how can I trust you with giving you the blessings?" You see? So we gotta be mindful, bring yourself out of that addiction bound, bound, you know, bondage. No, because, um, programming the illusion and the matrix is nothing but addiction for anyone in the world. Pretty much, if you think about it, we're all addicted to something, right? Even if it's watching TV, even if it's eating sweets like we talked about earlier. Even if it's some, it's something that doesn't serve us, right? Yeah, we all addicted to something and it's hard to shake it, trust me. That's that self-discipline. I'm, 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 I need to do more self-discipline towards working out. I gotta do that. I gotta get on it, right? But anyways, it says, um, you know, outside of what's not self-discipline or spiritual discipline is, um, the way of controlling or managing others, okay? So that's not spiritual, that's not spiritual discipline, okay? Um, you shouldn't wanna control anyone that also goes back to fear. Remember, we talked about that too. And that's also something hard in reference of what we have to try to break, right? Because some of us are so used of trying to have control over things in our life. That goes back to fear and then that goes back to not having faith over fear. So remember, we always talk about that. You have to let go. I even said that last night to, um, Miss T on our, um, call because, you know, we do, um, get into fear over our children the most, right? And for some people, it's other things in reference of what you wanna try to have control over, but you have no control over it, you know what I'm saying? Because, um, but you have to have faith, you know? Um, so that is something we have to have even for those things that seem the most important to us in our life. You know, even the children you bear, you have to let them, you have to let them, you know, walk, you know, just like they crawl to walk into, you know, stepping out, growing up, you know, you gotta let them, you gotta let them live, family, you know? Um, and have faith that, you know, your work, you know what I'm saying? And what you taught them and your work with your spiritual connection will, you know, for staying. That's why it's good to have spiritual discipline. Then your faith will be very strong, but sometimes, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes even the ones who are spiritually disciplined, and you heard that, right? Even the ones that are super spiritually disciplined will still have a, of itch of fear around what they, you know, feel like they have no control over. Because fear, control is the top thing that will shake you in reference of your spiritual discipline. Control and fear, those are the two top things. So if you can work on control and fear in your life, you'll master a lot, family, trust me. Because I'm working on it, right? Because I'm like letting stuff go, detachment. Spiritual. You see how I just flicked off? Every time I get to talking about something that's real, it flicks off. Okay, let's see what it says. "Like they say, our grandmother's prayers are blessed with us." Right. Now it's time for us to take on those persons, yeah? Right, now it's time for us to take on those prayers, yeah? Yeah, absolutely. Because now, we have to be the ones, like for most of us, our grandparents probably are passed on. Some of us, our parents are passing on and we're becoming those that are gonna be ancestors soon. You know what I'm saying? Not soon, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, within the next forty, fifty years, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, you gotta start doing those prayers. You gotta make your spiritual connection strong, strong. Because that's the part of your discipline, right, and how you want to live your life, you know what I'm saying? So, so I have some questions here. Um, yeah, exactly. Some of us are, right? Uh, uh, I, I mean, I'm not, but yet, but yeah, some of us, we are the grandparents now, right? Yeah, and yeah, Eldra, you, yeah, I was just saying this about our grandma, right? So I have some things here about questions, right? That you may wanna write down, like some prompts to kind of look at and see if you were, um, spiritually, um, you know, disciplined, you know, or is it some things that you may, um, wanna look at? You know, because I always like to give you guys like prompts sometimes about being spiritually disciplined. And so I also wanna tell you, I'm gonna give you the prompts, but let me, um, read this, um, that I found today about being spiritually disciplined. So being spiritually disciplined, um, refers to, um, things that help you focus on the present and the voice of spirit. Okay, so I'm gonna repeat that. Being spiritually disciplined helps you to focus on the presence and the voice of spirit. So being spiritually disciplined, and I noticed that, like, because that's what I worked on first in reference. Well, not first because I was working on doing the scrying and, well, no, I'm not gonna say that first either with the cards. Then it went to the scrying, then I went to the, the listening more to my, the voices, right? And, and, and what spirit's speaking to me and asking to have that in heightened, right? But not only with that, being in, um, meditation helps that, you know what I'm saying? Because you're able to quiet your mind, you're able to listen to spirit and you're able to know the energy now too. So all of that takes place in reference of you tapping into that spiritual ability, family. Um, and that's, and that's just the part, you know, you may have, you may need to quiet your mind for you to be able to tap in so you can do divination better. Or you may need to tap, you know, all of that goes around your spiritual abilities as we always talk about. You need to tap into your spiritual abilities in whatever form it may work for you, you know what I'm saying? You may have this spiritual ability to see. You might have the spiritual ability to speak, you know? Whatever it may be, right? You may have the healing hands, you know? You may be able to do Reiki or whatever, heal people. It may be through the herbs, whatever it may be. Your spiritual abilities also take spiritual discipline, right? You have to take your time, work on it more often, daily, however, you know, once we, however you wanna do it, but get a routine. That's a part of discipline, right? Just like somebody going practice basketball every day. They have discipline and they practice there and they learn it and they become the master of it, right? It's the same difference with your spiritual journey. So that's why I wanted to bring this to you guys, as well as what we learn, as well as your lessons and all your, your teachings and things of that sort, the classes you take, whatever it is, you know? You have to be disciplined towards it, right, and be serious. You're gonna be disciplined out the gate if you're serious, you know that? Because you have to question yourself. If I'm not serious about something, I don't care. I get to it, right? I know that's how I am. I'll get to it, you know what I'm saying? If I'm not serious about it, I'll get to it. I'm, I'm gonna come back to that, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I, you know, procrastinator, you know? Yeah, you know, I'll put it off till tomorrow, you know? I'll do it tomorrow. I used to be good about that, but I had to check myself. Yes, I know, right? I know. I'm like that too, sis, but I had. See, I be speaking to y'all because y'all like me, trust me. I know, okay? I'm even like that about doing the day, no dishes. I be like, I get to them dishes tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? I put that up tomorrow, child. I do that tomorrow, child. I will do that tomorrow. Let me tell you something. Think about this. Think about this, y'all. If y'all put off y'all spiritual work, that's how the ancestors is gonna do you. That's how God gonna do you. God gonna be like, okay, I get with them tomorrow. I do that for, really, you might need that today. You might need that today. What if it's your, what if it's your rent money? What if it's the, what if you gonna be evicted tomorrow? You need that blessing. You need, you, you know what I mean? Or what if it's you got sick and you need to be healed today? You need to be healed today, not tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? So you gotta think about that, change your perception. Know the ancestors was there, is always here for me. When I'm feeling by myself, the ancestors is here for me. They don't tell me that. When I don't feel good, they heal me. When I need some money, they here for me. I can't put the ancestors on. Can't put the ancestors on. I must do it. I must have self-discipline to make sure that I do for them just like they do for me, right? They guide me every day. They put me on my way, like the song say, hello, okay? So, yeah, you gotta do it, family. You must do it. It's not an option, not any longer. You know what I'm saying? We know we gotta do. So, these activities help us to see God's will, to see your ancestors' help, your guidance, right? For our lives and more clearly so that we can live the life we desire. Yes, because how you gonna desire something? How you gonna desire something and you won't even, you know, stay on task with whatever you need to do? You know, in reference of your meditation, tapping in, you know, speaking to your ancestors daily, putting some, um, ancestor food on their altar, burning some ancestor money, doing something, right? Getting a flower for your ancestor, put a candle up for the ancestor, do something, right? You gotta do it, family, right? Self-discipline and not even, not even only that, but just praying. You gotta be disciplined to do something. Hey, T-Rose, hey, sis. So, I say this to say that, um, yeah, cleaning up the altar, right? Cleaning your altar, getting used to doing that, maybe put you a specific day on your calendar, you know? Oh, it's okay, love. And you know what? That's okay because I just talked about that. That's a part of your self-discipline. Being able to take care of the children, right? Well, make sure you take care of you too, just like you, just like that little baby had a meltdown. Whenever you have a meltdown, you, you take care of you first, right? That's a good example, self-discipline. So to develop self-discipline in any area of our life, family, you need to set a goal, right? Set a goal. Start small, okay? Um, that's, that's for those who haven't already started doing it or maybe you got thrown off, you know what I'm saying? Because, listen. Your girl, okay? I ain't perfect by far, okay? So, the reason why, you know, your girl picks these type of topics is either it's something going on with someone around me or it's me. Okay, or both, okay? Don't get it twisted, okay? Ain't no, ain't no perfect person over here. But, set a goal, like me. I'm gonna tell you what my new self-discipline goal is about to be, okay? And me and Texas is talking about it before y'all, some of y'all gotta be here, so I will repeat it. Exercising, okay? I've gained about ten, fifteen pounds, okay? All right, so, uh, yeah, your girl is gearing to be on her exercise shebang, okay? So, self-discipline. So I gotta check myself, right? Um, I'm disciplined to my ancestors. I'm, I'm disciplined on my spiritual walk. I'm very serio- serious about my spiritual walk. I will do all I have to do daily to, to conversate, to talk, to speak to the ancestors in any type, way, shape, form or fashion. I will meditate, I will pray, I will, you know, do what I need to do, right? And so it's like, okay, kid, but you gotta, you gotta get yourself together. You can't be just, um, you, you, you done got used to being in the house, okay? You done got used to being in the house. You done put yourself in self, uh, um, soul isolation or soul solitude is what I had been calling me, okay? I had to do that on purpose because y'all know I was going through some things. But throughout them things, okay, I was still eating, okay? And fasting and then coming off of fast, oh, it's going down. Like, it's like the song used to say, it's going down in the DM. It was going down in the kitchen, okay? Because y'all know I love to cook, okay? That's number two, okay? And number three is, your girl be having her appetite be getting up because of menopause too. So the menopause took the hunger to a whole nother level, okay? So, I've noticed it, okay? Since the peri does creeped on in, since peri, peri menopause creeped on up on your girl. Yeah, done put on about ten, fifteen pounds. It's actually twelve pounds because I weighed myself the other day, okay? So your girls is in, your girl is in the eight nines now, so it's time to, I gotta do what I gotta do. I gotta get on back to the gym, family, okay? So I gotta get some self-discipline, okay? So not only is this about spiritual discipline, but this is about self-discipline for your girl to get back and get to working out, okay? Okay, so we're gonna do this together. Don't be laughing at me. Yes, we are human. Thank you, sis, for that reminder. I've been off, oh, a month and a half, I've been stacking. Exactly. You see what I'm saying? Texas, you know, that's why you laughing, okay? You already know what it is. Yes, I've been thinking about my mom lately, see? And so, these things, see what I'm saying? But that's that connection, you see? So you've been thinking about your mom lately? That goes back to the whole thing that I was telling you. Remember how, I, well, I did the video here. I be, be forgetting. I be doing the daily messages with y'all every day. So, yeah, you seen I was like going through it, right? My grandma passing day, death, death day. And I had been thinking about her anyway, but she shows signs and, you know, synchronicities and then she comes through my dreams and then she goes to other people too. Right? But, um, and I know my connection is getting stronger. I know my connection is getting stronger because my spiritual abilities are opening wide up, right? Because I'm seeing me being able to do things, right? Um, and so, um, and I'm so grateful, right? But, um, that also makes you wanna heighten that spiritual discipline. So if I can heighten that spiritual discipline, I can heighten this self-discipline on this body of mine too, right? I gotta get to it, okay? Um, and I have been soaking up a lot of sun, you know? I said, this, today I took my hat off and I sit out in the sun and let that sun beam down on my head and just meditate and ask the Most High and gave gratitude to the Most High and said, thank you, thank you, thank you. I give you all gratitude for taking the blockages and the bondage off of me, you know what I mean? And just speak to the sun and I did it at the, at the three o'clock hour. Let's not forget the times. Use your times and your dates, right? Use your times and your dates. Don't forget to take it back an hour, right? So, yes, I was out there, uh, three, I mean, two o'clock today, you know what I'm saying? Getting that timing, you know? So really, really, really sit with your ancestors. If she, you thinking about her, you need to be at an altar, talking to her, telling her, asking her to help me, right? Yes, I've been using that as, as my reason as well because the much Jesus be here. It is. It's not an excuse. It really is your hormones. Because that's what menopause is, is your horm- well, it's an affliction too, but it's your hormones, right? Mine is getting into nature more often, yes, sis. So the best way I could tell you, um, like how I'm doing now, and I'm probably gonna like pipe it up because I am in the process of moving, right? But, um, I always go on the back porch. Like, I work from home, but I make it a dedicated time to go out on the back porch. And my back porch is like the sun be beaming right on it, right? So I sit out there and just meditate anywhere. If, and when I get to my new space, I'm gonna find, you know, my mojo. If it's on my porch, if it's on my patio, if it's outside, I'm, I'm gonna go. You know what I'm saying? So take you some time, get you some fresh air, get in the sun. And if you can, find you a park, like I have a park, but I ain't been to my park lately. Um, first off, I hadn't been back to the park because it was cool. It was real, real cool. But now that it's getting warm, it's time for me to go back to my park because I have my own special tree there. Y'all, y'all know I be doing my readings there a lot, um, and when it get warm and I would continue to do that. So maybe just try to find you a little bit of time, um, and make it, uh, make it a scheduled situation. See, setting a goal, but not only setting a goal, but setting a time, just like you have a time to go get your hair done. Set a time for you to go to the park or to get out in nature. That's self-discipline, you see? Yes, sis. Yes, I had a dream about my mom and she came in loud as hell. She said, you better not forget about me. It woke me up. Ah, ah, that was her. That was her saying, you better get your tail up and don't forget about me. Go to that altar, put me some stuff out, girl. Burn me some money, okay? I got me some ancestor money sitting right here, but I had just burned my grandma's, I burnt her some on that, her death day to bring her, rise her up, honey. That, that stuff was so glowy, honey, yes. Yes, I've been out in the sun lately. Good, Eldra, good. Yes, yes. And I have been asking her a lot of things. Good, good, Eldra, create that, um, that's what you do. You know, create that connection, create that bond, um, and then act, you know what I'm saying? Act for help in reference of spiritual discipline. Say, help me to be able to meditate more. Help me to be able to see the things that I can't see. Help me to stop the things, you know, remove the things out my life that don't serve my highest good, remove them, no matter how hard it is. Well, you know, make it easy on me, you know what I'm saying? But, you know, what doesn't serve me, remove it, right, with no harm. And those are the things that I say all the time. Yeah, use, you ordered some josh paper? Yes, I burned my josh paper yesterday, family. I got some. What did I do with mine that, um, I have both kinds, family? I have the gold and orange and I have the silver. You can use both, right? And my bamboo paper should be coming in because I ordered some bamboo paper. And I got my macabre, my copper macabre today. Look at this one, family. Got to show you guys. I showed, um, I think it was AJ today, but this is my macabre. It's copper. It's made out of the tensor, tensor copper. So that is what I'm, I used it today and sit out in the sun and let it, um, you know, basically get that oof into it and I'm gonna continue to use it. And I hold it in my hands and put my energy in it and I'm using that. And I'm gonna use it and use it and use it until I continue to use it and use it and get, make it get more powerful and powerful and speak to the ancestors, speak to the sun and use my macabre for what it's for, okay? Because that rim that we talk about is definitely what you should be tapping into. And the copper takes it to a whole nother level, okay? So I sit out in the sun for a reason today as well. Not only for me to soak up the sun, but for me to put power in my tools. And I also do that with my decks. Y'all know I keep my little finger decks with my decks in it. And I left my decks, and you know what, family? Since I've been doing that, y'all see how them readings been getting crazy, right? Them readers been getting crazy, like crazy, right? With messages, like insane, my personal readings. Like I've been getting major messages back about things that are just like exact, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, so I could tell a difference and you'll be able to tell a difference, but it's about what? Self-discipline. Spiritual discipline has made it grow. That's the spiritual growth that you guys see. You see it firsthand because y'all, majority, y'all in my spiritual family, y'all already know, okay? So I can't, you know, I, I can speak to this for people who don't know, you know what I'm saying? As much spiritual work that I'm putting in, but for with people that buy personal readings, right? And people that buy the products and so forth, right? And so when I get into my new space, family, I got some things that I'm gearing, put some power into in reference of products, okay? Um, and I got some ideas for it and it's gonna be self-made, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna include some herbal things because I gotta get back to my healthy exchange. I've been neglecting my baby over there, right? So some more teas. Y'all know I love to make my teas and stuff, so I gotta get back self-disciplined, family, right? Spiritually disciplined, right, in multiple ways, even with your business, even with your children, even with your body, mind, body and soul, right? So, yeah, okay? Let's see what she's talking about here. Okay, let me go record. I missed a lot. Y'all just talking. Okay, yes, Eldra's been asking him to assist me as well. Okay, good, sis. Ask for strength, yes. Yes, 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 me too, Eldra. I use my, my gold josh, yes, yes, sis, okay? And goddess, oh, that's nice. I need to order one. Yes, sis, I have to get me more bamboo. Yeah, bamboo. Listen, I'm gonna do some things with that bamboo. I cannot wait. Because see, I had bought some bamboo paper and I sent it to Ms. T, like, this was probably like, I was still in my old townhouse when I bought that bamboo paper. So she was like, that bamboo paper that I had bought was like the bamboo paper that wasn't all spiritually with the stuff that I needed, so I had to get the. was like the bamboo paper that wasn't all spiritually with the stuff that I needed so I had to get the one that she showed a long time ago family on the channel that was like um I think it's there like half raw bamboo paper or whatever it was that's the one that has the strong spiritual um whatever it is in it some type of something in it so yes I ordered that one nice do you have that story in yours um do I have this no this I ordered from um this shop on Etsy and you know I just bought cuz I I wanted it you know what I'm saying to to tap in you know what I'm saying so I got it from off of Etsy um I know the shop is in Australia that's what I was telling somebody the day I was like wow it's in Australia so you know I had to sage this sucker up the day um I had to uh palisanto it up put it in the sun put my energy into it speak to it right you have to do all those things you never know who done had it or made it but you know what I do know who made it now that I've um went back and researched the actual store it's actually a reader it's actually a reader that um that is on uh YouTube and they're really 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 popular on YouTube and I did not know that until before I ordered it because they put their card in there and I went back and looked and I was like oh they gave me like a discount and stuff like that and I was like oh and so I looked on there and I was like oh and she got like a hundred and eighty something thousand people on her YouTube page she makes these so I said oh she tapped in okay I I appreciate that right so yeah so um but yeah I'll give you her um thing I'll put it in the um the chat I mean in the link when we get out of here cuz I gotta get it get it she needs to get a vendor Eldra it's nice I know I need to I'mma try to see but I don't know because they specially make these she makes these like my hand cuz it's you when you look at it if you get it you can tell she made this by hand with something that she had to weld it together cuz it's copper and you know like with copper you can tell how somebody has to weld something together to make it look like the symbol so that's what that's what she did on here but it's true copper though it's true copper cuz I got copper bracelets so I know it's true copper cuz I've had these copper these same copper bracelets I only would have three of them on now but these same copper bracelets I've had the copper bracelets for maybe four or five years now yeah cuz other copper braces they won't last that long if they're not real copper braces okay um say yes they don't been on right the readings right yeah come back also on point yes honey okay yes I told you about the two messages that came through this week yes yes and um AJ too AJ AJ was talking about her message too earlier she was talking about some things too that came through and I think y'all was talking about the same that was that same night your messages must have been coming through that night I just thought about it when you said that too I'm like yeah but not only y'all but some of my personals you know what I'm saying but yeah so um and I say and I think it's been like two or three people who commented um so if you go back under my personal readings you'll see those people under there um that are talking about their readings like you know so okay so back to self-discipline sorry we got off chat task but you know I had to chit chat with my girls so um so we were talking about you know set a goal to to develop your self-discipline right so I like to give you guys solutions y'all know I always gotta give you solutions so the solutions of developing self-discipline is setting a goal commit to God and your ancestors that you're gonna keep you know keep it going right and stop procrastinating right and get started okay um be willing to do the necessary work eliminate and avoid distractions that's a big one you have to eliminate and avoid distractions that's a big one family because if you think about it that's why most of us get sidetracked cuz we distracted we got other stuff we procrastinate right but we gotta eliminate that and we gotta really really stay focused track your progress and reward yourself accordingly okay that's another thing when you are doing this self-discipline thing family even spiritually reward yourself cuz when you have a goal you set like with me when I get ready to do this exercise thing after I get into my space and get situated and I'm starting on my workout I'm gonna set a goal and when I meet that goal I'm gonna reward myself now I ain't gonna reward myself with a cake okay I ain't gonna do that but I'm gonna reward myself somehow I can't thought about that yet but I'm gonna reward myself so it gives me some type of initiative or incentive for myself that yes you did Keisha you made it you did that you know what I'm saying you know how we do right uh yes I noticed how at times I'm doing or get ready to do spirituality everyone wants my time right I'm like but that's but you know what that is and and probably all of y'all can talk to that whenever you gonna start doing something where you get ready to just tap in something is gonna try to distract you every time with me I know that for a fact even when I'm getting ready to do some readings right if they are gonna be really good readers it's something that's gonna distract me or try to you know what I'm saying that's why I have to think about and be mindful I'd be like uh-uh I ain't letting nothing distract me from doing excuse me from doing this you know what I'm saying yeah so you gotta be mindful pay attention right pay attention to what's going on and what you getting ready to do especially if it's spiritual work now if we talking about just working out and stuff like that yeah we still can get distracted but you could also distract yourself you know what I'm saying so don't get it twisted okay okay um so stay on task stay focused eliminate your distractions family and reward yourself okay self-discipline in is the inner work that refers to consistency applying efforts into things that keep us on track and improve upon them okay so um yes yeah exactly like the phone rings all the time all the time like every and I'm telling you every time I'm on a reading my phone rings or e- either goes off with somebody texting me a email it's something every time it does not fail so that is you know something coming through I I feel like sometimes it be spiritual sometimes it be distractions phone have call wells all day and then as soon as you get right all day right as soon as you get on there to start here it come I feel you I know those are them distractions that's that energy so track your progress family and reward yourself okay so those are the things and the solutions of self-discipline but you know self-discipline is about inner work y'all know I'm gonna keep drilling that in y'all till the end of time you have to do what your inner work family that's why this self-discipline message is here in reference of our shadow work cuz that shadow is a part of that self-discipline you have that big ego you have that procrastination you got all those shadow things that you working on but you gotta work it you gotta work on it consistently because you can't just work on it one day and feel like you gonna be okay family because no you're gonna go back to it trust me I know okay you gotta be consistent you know what I'm saying because consistency creates things to make it a pattern just like they say what twenty one days make something a a a routine yeah so you need to do that with your spiritual stuff too you know what I'm saying try it mark it down on a calendar get you a calendar specifically for your spiritual work and track yourself track yourself and when you track yourself reward yourself give yourself a pat on the back some some hugs some kisses take yourself to go get a massage a pedicure nails done whatever you hair did whatever you know listen you fancy okay like the song used to say get it okay reward yourself honey okay but you gotta have that self-discipline it's no way around it family for your spiritual growth okay and I want all y'all to grow spiritually as well as myself that's why I'm that's why I'm telling y'all so we can do this together and we gotta grow ourselves you know we gotta be healthy we gotta be mentally healthy first see so start there cuz remember I tell you guys they get your mind they got you so this gotta start first to be mindful to to have a different perception on things right then once you got that under control then you can move to those things that you wanna actually do that are you know miscellaneous so the mindful thing is the spiritual thing cuz that's who you are right your inner self is your spirit right so work on that family first right and then like me I feel like I'm gonna make sure I do my stuff spiritually that's already innate in me like I don't go a day without that now you know what I'm saying before I I ain't doing hardly no spiritual work I would be doing other stuff running around doing what I wanna do go to the mall go out with my homegirls go out to eat go to do this go to the club might go do this might go call my other homegirl might be on the phone with somebody for four five hours might go smoke me a blunt might go to girl been there done that see what I'm saying been there done that wrote had the t-shirt wrote the log all of that drink me a bottle of wine whatever I wanna do I I used to be off the chain with it but now okay after self-discipline has kicked in spiritual discipline mindfulness change of perception God is good right God is good you know what I'm saying right yeah God is good cuz all that's changed I don't smoke weed no more which is amazing family right I listen I was that girl okay I was that girl wasn't no shame in my game you know what I'm saying since a long time family I don't even smoke no more don't even have the sensation but I asked the most high ask my ancestors to remove it from me family it's been almost but nine months it's don't even seem like it either it's been almost nine months family God is good God is good I have not been this long since I was overseas and in Kuwait I couldn't right cuz you be locked up and I didn't wanna be locked up over there but I'm just saying over there I did it for a year so if I can get up up to a year and pass that family we good over here you know what I'm saying but yes family so that I got rid of I don't drink you know wine and all that too much I drink wine but not as much as I used to I used to could put it down you know what I'm saying now I can get some wine and it lasts it sit in the refrigerator you know what I'm saying before I wasn't like that right self-discipline right before I wouldn't even meditate I would pray but I wouldn't meditate you know what I'm saying I'll meditate later right not no more family I meditate every night I got an alarm on my phone to meditate see what I'm saying that's that self-discipline cuz I know my ancestors gonna be having something to tell me and I'll be ready okay like watching TV and it ain't even the TV it's the TV up here okay that's where you gotta get you gotta get that self-discipline right right and sometimes you know I may sleep through it but the answers is we'll wake my tail up okay like uh it's four o'clock where you at you know what I'm saying cuz you get that alarm you start to have that alarm in your body then you know the discipline has kicked in it's become routine you see how that's how what I'm saying self-discipline becomes routine family but you gotta start to get there okay so just 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 work on it family just work on it that's all I'm saying I ain't judging nobody you know I know it's a struggle trust me I didn't do it overnight you see what I'm saying I didn't do it overnight but now I'm here now I'm here now I'm planning on going back now I gotta work on the self-discipline on the other side of things not the spiritual side but the physical okay cuz I got the spiritual unlock with the self-discipline cuz I'm gonna do something for my ancestors go to their altar daily okay pray to them meditate with them whatever it may be burns masters whatever it may be that something will happen daily okay now I gotta do that with this body now I gotta do that with this body and the eating okay now I gotta control that okay so yes family so those are the things self I gave you one spiritual way or how my example and what you should be doing what shouldn't be doing how you shouldn't look at spirit um spiritual um discipline and I gave you the physical okay which would be your body okay and your mind right mind body and soul is what we covered right within an hour so I hope this helped family she laughing at me yes cuz I listen honey these hormones was off the chain I was I was like twelve pounds oh no oh no oh no I got to get this off okay yeah so we gotta get to it sister we gotta get to it okay so all my sisters in the front in the back listen okay we already put us together a workout exercise spiritual family exercise routine honey and that's gonna be next okay so y'all be looking for it y'all see that on my page and it be like okay we're gonna start with doing this no but you know something that can help us and at least be able to um eat well you know and not have as many munchies and sweets cuz I'm I'm that girl I love sweets I can eat a piece of cake ice cream and I and I just finished some Klondike bars I'm not even gonna lie to you cuz I love Klondike bars you know what I'm saying but that's listen I have an open book over here we'll keep it real with y'all but we gonna work on this thing okay you just gotta go you just got your nipple go good girl listen 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 diet I have a whole workout room downstairs that I put together I have a treadmill in there I have weights I have a yoga mat all kinds of stuff that I haven't went down there
yeah I know I need to
but I'm moving and where I'm moving to has two gyms so I can't I don't have any excuse even though I have a gym downstairs but you know I'm just gonna put it out there you know we're gonna try this one day at a time AJ one day I got a bag of M and M's now see well listen you confess and says that's okay listen enjoy okay cuz I love me a good old M and M's especially the peanut kind okay I love them okay I started my mini step and you know it good AJ you better keep it up sis you better do it okay I'm proud of you I'm proud of you y'all so crazy I'm kidding I'll be here with y'all y'all funny but anyways family we gonna work on our self-discipline of these bodies first thing first though we gotta do this thing spiritually and that's why I sent you that's for us to expand right that's for us to expand yeah so we gotta do that first right master that okay not the oh my god what is wrong with you she's on my family size woo that's so bad dog that is so bad okay oh yes the peanut kind Jesus so it's a little healthy that is a little I hate with you when I tell you that right there what am I doing where she is hilarious yes I told Kasey it's the food for me yes I can work out but then sweets be calling me I gotta get fine for summer hello okay me too to to get fine for nothing I don't be going nowhere look they already have the Dreamville Fest here the first weekend in April which everybody goes to right I don't go to it because it's more or less younger crowd or whatever but um it's it brings a lot of people you know what I'm saying so I'm like dang I could have went somewhere or something like that but girl I don't be going I be just wishing on the stuff wishing on the star girl I ain't going nowhere girl to find out where you are girl I ain't going nowhere okay laughing at me I'm finding out for the house exactly that's what I said but I'm gonna get Mr. Right if I'm sitting in the house but you know what this and Mr. Right I don't know he it's gotta be a Mr. Right honey he gotta be spiritually right honey oh I don't know but family I'm gonna get up off of here I just wanted to bring y'all their self-discipline cuz he gotta have self-discipline too okay that's the main thing so how can we find that just right about finding out for the house right alright my loves if y'all missed the video about self-discipline rewind it back okay take it back okay and check out what I was talking about about self-discipline right um the 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 do's and the don'ts we talked about and then I gave you some solutions right make sure you start out with the spiritual um okay okay no problem sis okay um yeah because we gotta talk about we we need to be doing hot topics soon cuz I I know people love the hot topics so we're gonna keep doing that really soon um but yes so family I just wanted to wrap it up here um but if you didn't get to see you know um yes I I love you too sis love all of y'all um but yes y'all rewinding back for those that didn't get to see it but I hope you guys enjoyed talking about the self-discipline because this is not only just you know something in reference of what I wanted to bring to the collective but it's something that I want to push you nudge you to give you that oof right to make you really think are you really self-disciplined spiritually as well as just for your body your mind your soul right so work on that family I love you guys through the darkness to the light right yeah beside time Yeah, it's our time. Good night. See you, guys. I love you. Bye.